Okay, we are gonna go ahead and get started with our work session this evening. On the budget, I will turn it over to Dr. Ahar.
I'll turn my mic on this time. You all should have received from Shashank a slide deck. He sent shortly before we met this afternoon. Shashank, do you want to share your presentation on Teams? That way, anyone who's tuning in can see it as well.
Sure. Can you see it, Tom? Okay, great, thank you.
What we, what Shashank and I did, we tried to be responsive to the the questions and comments that we had last meeting. Or after the last work session on budget and and also include the known unknowns that have developed since then. So we still have some unknowns, of course, but it's a little bit of a clearer picture than it was last time. And then kind of a final look at where we think we are as we approach about a month, little, well, I guess about six weeks until we have to certify. But we had planned on certifying the first meeting in April, so about a month from now. So, Shashank, if you want to walk us through and all this chime in as needed.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, Dr. Ahar. So what I plan to cover today is I was requested to share the calendar that we would have for the budget. What the fiscal strategy, the expenditure reductions would be. The board wanted a little bit more details on that. I have dialed in what the costs would be for the SMART goals. What are the general fund assumptions? The general fund forecast? What's going to happen to property taxes for the next fiscal year? And then the summary for financial measures and objectives. This is the calendar we landed at. We're having the board session today. We had one two weeks back. We plan to publish online and in the register on March 22nd. There would be a virtual community forum, which would be led by Dr. Ahar and myself on March 26th. The public hearing and adoption of the budget would happen on April 6th, which is the meeting after this particular meeting, because this is only one meeting in the month of March. Between 7th to 14th window, we are keeping that in case there's a special board meeting needed for public hearing and budget certification, in case any questions come up from the board or the community, which we need to address. And April 15th is the date that we certify the budget and adopt it. And the fiscal year starts from July 1st. So this is the calendar of the key dates between now and April 15th, basically. So what has been the evolving fiscal strategy of our district? In 20, when the budget was created, I have tried to highlight what was the reduction that we were planning for. Twenty-four million dollars in 2021 and 22, and what the spending authority for that was. In 21, when I became the CFO of the district, I said we could probably slow down a little bit because we were doing better than what we were planning in FY20 budget strategy. So reduce that $24 million in 21 and 22 to $14 million in 21, 22, and 23. And on the next column over there, it shows what the spending authority would be. And as you would see, that for 21, we were targeting a $24 million at 6.1. Whereas in 21, with $14 million, we were 6.2, that is because the actuals were coming out better. FY22, for the budget, we had a curve ball thrown at us, which was COVID. So we were planning to have $20 million of reduction in FY22. But as I had shared with the board, that is becoming increasingly difficult unless we make some really bold decisions. But even then, by FY23, we would be on track to achieve our 15% spending authority target, which the board had laid on. I think it was an FY19, 20 time period. This is a slide which I had shared last time, and I was asked to provide further details. So the next slide, I would cover that. The only change between last time and this time is we have added what is going to be the cost of the SMART goals. And I may highlight over here, like Dr. Ahar has said, it is still not fully big. But this half a million dollars includes the learning for and math goals. It does not include the SEL goals, which we are still working on. So this is the additional cost which is happening for the first three SMART goals.
Yeah, and I would just add that that does not include SIR funds. So the stuff funded by SIR would be above and beyond this, because this just reflects the general fund.
That is accurate, Dr. Ahar. So here, I have got into more details over here. Was what is, what are these 4.1 million dollars FTE reductions here? So based on the student enrollment, we ran the allocation process, and the number of FTEs that would get eliminated because of that. In elementary school, where we have the highest impact is 13, middle school is five, and high school is two. So that comes out to almost $1.76 million. We evaluated programs, and the two programs that we want to downsize, one is IB and the other is turnaround arts. So turnaround arts, we had coordinators, which would be going away. But that does not mean that the program would be closed. At the central office, we are eliminating 13 FTEs at a cost of $1.9 million. So this is 4.1 million dollars is basically consisting of FTE positions reductions. Then on the right-hand side is the activities, which is $1.5 million. As we are making changes to the IB programs, certain expenses related to that would be eliminated. We have a climate summit, and I would apologize, the numbers have been transposed. The climate summit is actually .02 and stipends is 0.9. The numbers have been transposed over here, so my apologies for that. So climate summit is $200,000. It costs a lot more, but we get some fundings. And $200,000 is what was being subsidized by the general fund. Because we are going, we are in a virtual mode, and in this conference, we have over 2,000 participants. We were not comfortable having such a large conference in July, August of this year. And we are basically going to postpone it for the next fiscal year.
Yeah, the decisions for that had to be made months ago in order to get all the speakers and so forth and not lose deposits if indeed we couldn't hold it in person. So we didn't think it was worth the risk.
And the stipends is .9 million dollars. The other thing that we are changing is employee benefits. So a little bit change in program related to medical, which would help in .5 million dollars. And dental would be $2 million. So coming on SMART goals, we've tried to highlight over here, how is FY21 budgeted and FY22? So if you remember, I had been last year when I had presented the budget, I had said that as far as 21 goes, the plan is basically to reprioritize those dollars, which we already have to the SMART goal. And even though we are showing a cost of $1.2 million in 21, this is still impact to general fund would be mainly because we are reprioritizing the spend in other places. In FY22, there's around $1.1 million. And I've tried to highlight in the last two columns, what is the amount that is coming from general fund? And what are the other sources? So over here, if we are getting some money either from curriculum adoption, which we already have, and we are reprioritizing that dollars, or if you've got something from SIR, which we are using, or from EQPD, that is what I've tried to highlight in the last column. So that basically shows that the increase to general fund is $465,000 for us to work on the first three SMART goals, which are related to literacy and math. And that is what I had shown in the earlier slide for budget reductions, that we still have 15.3, but half a million dollars will be offset by this. So what is driving these expenses and these programs? And, okay. So FY21 and FY22, I have tried to highlight again over here for content development, curriculum, PD for literacy, what exactly we are doing, which is driving these expenses, and for math, what exactly we are doing. I would probably not go through every item on the slide, but basically trying to highlight what is causing the variations over here. This slide, I don't want to touch too much time on, except that 2.4 SSA has finally been approved by the governor. And the other item in green is that we are finally dialing in $15 million, which actually is higher than what we had planned last year, which was $14 million. But because of lower enrollment, we had increased it to 20, but we are coming down to close to $15 million. The other items we have discussed, so I won't spend any time on that. The only reason why I'm showing this slide is because the following two slides will actually show the actual dollar impact and the assumptions that we have made to come over there. But in a highlight, the budget guarantee is basically getting 1% more on the regular program cost compared to prior year. And on-time funding is in case the students come back, which have not enrolled this year, the thousand, close to 1,000 kids, then we can apply to SBRC for spending authority, but we don't get cash. So what are my assumptions for on-time funding? And this is basically an assumption, it's a work in process, and I'm open to suggestions. I've basically split over here between pre-K and K and the first through five kids. So pre-K and K, I've said at least 75% of the students should come back next year. And a lot of these students who are not coming back were because of COVID, parents were red-shirting. So as we are getting more vaccinations, the positivity rate is coming down. Hopefully, at least 75% of the students should be back. And I have split them from first to fifth grade and assuming 50% over there. So even though we have lost 1,000 students, I would expect around 712 students to come back. And at the current rate of 7,200 per student, that's almost $5.1 million. Again, I would highlight it's spending authority and not cash for the district. And any questions as I'm going along, please talk me if there are any questions.
So yeah, I do have a question about that, Shashank. If those kids came back and we had to get the authority for that, is that money that we'd have to further cut, or could that come from somewhere else?
No, we could use our cash reserve for that. We have a very healthy cash reserve, and so that would spend that down and would actually not be a bad thing.
Absolutely. So cash is not a constraint, Kori. That is a benefit that we have. We have managed to build some cash.
And I thought that was true. I was just clarifying. So now, do we have any idea when we would hear about when those kids re-enrolled?
So this would probably be known more as the school year is starting, which is going to be more in the August timeline, that we get to know how many are coming back. In fact, they could be coming back even later. And SBRC meets, I think, four times a year. So we can go anytime we get to know that the number of students are coming back. So even if they came mid-year, we can go to SBRC and ask for them. We have had a situation in our district where the enrollment has been declining, so we have never really gone to SBRC. But based on the enrollment numbers, even if one student, one additional student came back, we can go to SBRC for that amount.
So hypothetically, if we get into mid-September and we've got classes that are enormous, because we had to reduce a bunch of positions, but we've got these kids returning, could we then make some mid-year hires and reshuffle some of the classes? Or what would that look like?
Yeah, we sure could. Yeah. So that, yeah, and that's one of the things that that's one of the things that we're really trying to be prepared for is the variance between what we know and what we don't know right now. And so when the registration process starts in July, that will start to become clear, you know, looking at actual enrolled versus projected enrolled. And so we typically keep a few, at the elementary level especially, keep a few FTE unfilled, so that we can put them, you know, so we don't assign somebody and then and then have to change their assignment, so to kind of see where everything falls out, so we can make smart use of the additional FTEs. But in this instance, it could mean literally some hiring, you know, later in the summer, later than we would like to. But certainly, we want to continue to keep our class sizes down, especially at K1, 2. So yeah, that could be a possibility.
Kindergarten enrollment started a few weeks ago. Have we looked at the numbers currently to see if they are on track for where we were at last year, or?
Yeah, I haven't looked at that yet. No, but we'll certainly be monitoring that.
Any other questions? If not, I'll keep rolling. Open enrollment. So what, again, we have tried to assume is certain math to see what exactly could be the potential impact of the voluntary diversity plan going away. So for the last six years, the average of OE that the district has denied is 256. 2021 was an abnormal year. We had a fairly large number of kids. So if we were to remove that anomaly, we have around 216 kids on an average for those five years. The last two years, not the COVID year, but the two years prior to that, the average number of students, which we had denied open enrollment, were only 82. And our assumption is that that number has come down because the students did not have to go to CAM or Clayton Ridge for the virtual campus was introduced at the district itself. Now, the voluntary diversity plan could have a negative impact, so I'm not taking 82 students. But I'm saying it could be higher, and that could be almost 150 students. So 150 students at the cost of 7,200 per student is a little over a million dollars. This is what we anticipate could potentially happen.
So the net of that, with the assumptions that are above, with the students returning, is about $4 million?
That is correct.
This one, the OE question, we'll actually have an answer to pretty soon.
That is true. So the date which the parents had to send the information was March 1st. So we have the team, which is working and tabulating that information, and Dr. Ahar and myself are meeting with the team early next week. So we would have a better information at that point in time. And obviously, before we do the final budget, we would have the actual numbers for open enrollment at least.
Tom, are we waiting to respond to open enrollment requests until legislature takes action?
Yeah, hopefully, we'll have that information finalized before we have to respond to these folks. So that's the idea, is to hold until we know.
Any other questions? So based on those assumptions, if you see over here, I think, let's look at the assumption section, which is at the bottom over here. Basically, taking state supplemental aid for 22 at 2.4%, and again, coming back to the 1% thereafter. The enrollment is 31,621. But in FY23, the way we have done it is assuming that 700 students will come back, then the negative impact of OE and the negative impact of 250 students that we have always been reducing. Because of the 712 students coming back, there's still an increase of approximately 312 students coming in over here. And then thereafter, we are still assuming 250 student reduction for 24 and 25. And the expenditure reduction that I'm showing for 22 is 15, as we discussed, and then 14 million thereafter. And the impact of that on unspent spending authority, as well as the solvency ratio. Something else that I would highlight in 24, 25, if you see the expenditures over revenue is getting negative. And the reason is because of our conservative estimate over here. We are assuming increase in salary and benefits. We are assuming state supplemental aid at 1%. We are assuming increase in expenses at 1%. So obviously, our expenses are going up much higher than this, than the revenues which are coming in. And that is more because of the conservative approach that we are taking over here. But even then, we still maintain an unspent spending authority at a fairly good level, and so is the solvency ratio. Tax confidence. So now that we know 2.4% SSA, how does the 22 property tax look like? So if you see the basic reduction, which is coming through in general, is driven by cash reserve levy, which is 2.47. The budget guarantee is offsetting some of that, and the net impact of that is 2.35. We're reducing the management levy by 88. Purple, as we had gone and approved, got the approval from the voters. Even though it's increasing, the overall impact, as we had always said, would not be an increase in property taxes. So we are holding true to that. Pearl, we are keeping it flat, and we don't have a debt service. And that is related to GEO bonds. So and since we don't have GEO bonds, neither are we having any plans of issuing any GEO bonds. That is zero. So a total reduction of almost 253, which is coming through based on what I'm showing right now for FY22. And this is the final slide, where we basically show what is happening to the enrollment, the unspent authorized budget, the spending ratio, the solvency ratio, and SSA, and DMA, and AFSMI, we're still under negotiations. I would say we had a fairly advanced stage with AFSMI, DMA is still in progress. So it's still not. I think that was my last slide. So if any questions from anyone, I would be happy to entertain you.
So if you want to, which slide? The one where you had the proposed staffing cuts? Or was that like five or six or so? Number six?
You're talking about this one?
Yes, that one.
Perfect.
So I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around where these, so we've got 4 million, one and a half, two and a half. What is that adding up to? I mean, is that the identified 15, but then there's four and a half more? What is this going toward, I guess?
That's a valid question, and that is where we need to go on this slide, where early retirement savings is $2 million. Then you have your SSA reduction, I mean increase, because we were budgeting at 1%. And it's not 2.4, that is $3.2 million. And then there is moving of cost from general fund to Save and Purple, which is another half a million dollars. And again, the health and benefits I'm showing over here is $4 million. But the actual reduction coming through your health and dental is two and a half, and the balance is through the increase in payroll. So that increase in payroll, we are moderating to get that additional $1.5 million. Does that help, Kori?
Yeah, it does. Then if you could just flip back to the next one for a second. And so when you say changes to IB, what are those changes looking like? I guess that's more for Tom and Shashank, but.
Yeah, that's mainly the discontinuation of the diploma program. And so most of that amount goes that you'll see on on the left-hand side of that slide, the 2.4 FTE is connected to that. And then the 0.4 has to do mostly with professional development and fees that we pay to the IB organization.
So then the MYP and PYP would still stick around basically unchanged?
Yeah.
And then with those, with the FTEs at elementary and middle, would that mostly just be through attrition and not rehiring, or are we talking about cuts?
No, no, nobody's going to lose their job. I mean, there might be some central office folks who lose their job, but most of, all of the, at least all of the reductions and positions at the elementary, middle, and high school are easily absorbed by retirements and resignations and so forth. Way more than, I mean, we'll still be hiring quite a few teachers, as a matter of fact.
Okay, and then the dental, the 2 million, that, I mean, is that kind of a radical new dental plan? I mean, that's a pretty large number, I guess, is my point. Where is that coming from?
It's an employee contribution for family dental at, is it $50 a month?
It is $25 a pay period, which is $50 a month, correct?
$50 a month.
And what does the medical equate to per person?
Nothing in cost, but it's a reduction in, let's see if I can remember this accurately. There's a, there are certain procedures that you have to go, you'd have to go to a, I'm not going to think of the right term, but.
For the ER, I think it is instead of 80%, it's going to be 70%.
Well, there's that, but then there's also for certain procedures, you have to go to a set of pre-identified providers.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Which is actually a move that we had made two years ago, but we just added a couple of more, a couple more procedures to that.
So this change is not going to impact the out-of-pocket amount for employees?
Correct.
No, it will not.
It will for dental, but not medical?
Yeah, for dental, it will. For family dental.
The district so far had, and Tom, correct me if I misspeak, for the administrators, for the family, we always had a share that they had to pay for the family. And even for AFSMI, we had a share where they had to pay. The administrator's rate was a little bit higher than AFSMI. The rest of the employers did not have it. So now it's going to be across the board.
Tom and Shashank, I asked a version of this question a year ago. And it's not reflected in the presentation, but it was more in the detailed presentation you gave us two weeks ago. But, you know, we're continuing to build a fund balance and the management levy. There's some restrictions in what we can do with that, and we certainly can't use it to build cash reserves. And there's some risks to the district in going about that. Are you all confident that the plan that you have, which continues to grow that management kind of bank account is consistent with state law and will run us afoul of anything?
Yeah. Yeah, in fact, we considered proposing something a little bit higher for management fund. But what we, since we have, since we're, we know we're dropping the property tax rate, the part that we control, what we're trying to do is to be in a position to keep it stable for at least two years. What happens with one-time funding, you know, that we can draw, you know? What happens with cash reserve? Because the cash reserve right now has to go away because of how high our cash balance is. So we're confident that where we set it will keep us So we're confident that where we set it will keep us consistent for two years. And then by that time, um, you know, we'll keep monitoring it. But, but if we can't bring the, um, hopefully, if we feel the need in two years to drop the, the management levy, hopefully we'll be in a position to increase the cash reserve levy, the equivalent. So there won't be a, a change, um, another change then. But, um, if we set it, um, a little bit higher, which we were considering, we knew we would have to almost inevitably pull it back next year. So we said, let's just do it once and try to stay consistent for two years and hopefully, um, consistent beyond.
And Rob, what, what may be helpful also is that the early retirement offering this year that we are getting into is almost nine to ten million dollar expense. And we would be having similar programs going forward. So to have that flexibility for us, if we have a plan coming up, having the fine balance would also be helpful. Correct, that is correct. Correct. We can't hear you right now, yeah?
I'm, I'm smiling and laughing at myself underneath my mask right now. What, what I was gonna say is my next question is about next year, but I'll, I'll hold back if other folks have, have questions about this year.
I don't know if mine is probably about this year as opposed to maybe futuristic. So Tom, you said you want to keep this tax rate two years somewhat stable. So how do we make sure we're not doing this up-down, up-down? Because once we say, okay, we're gonna drop the tax rate because our, um, you know, our reserves are at that level that we can't, you know, we can no longer pull that cashers or levy. What happens when we have to dip into those funds? And then is it, it's not the solvency ratio I'm trying to, what's the other number?
Spending authority.
Spending authority. Okay. Is it this, or maybe it is, is that the, the spending authority that's fifteen percent? Where are we at fifteen percent?
We're, we're, the goal, the goal right now in board policy is fifteen percent for both unspent spending authority and, and cash reserve. We're, we're north of fifteen percent for cash reserve. We're, we're trying to build the, the unspent spending authority up to fifteen.
Okay. And isn't it the unspent spending authority that, is it that or the solvency ratio that once we hit that fifteen percent that the cash reserve levy, we can no longer collect?
That's the, that's the solvency ratio.
Okay, so the solvency ratio, so that's, that's what's in my head. But how do we avoid the up-down? So what happens if we have to go to SBRC and we take more funds out and the solvency ratio goes down? I, I just don't want us to get into this influx.
No, well, I, right, I don't either. And we've done a remarkable, uh, uh, you compare us with literally anyone in the state and see how consistent we've kept our tax rate. I think we've done a remarkable job. Um, and that's the, and that's what I was just trying to explain. We, we are trying our level best right now, given the very strange time that we're in of at least knowing that what we hit for FY twenty-two will be the same for FY twenty-three. And, and I can't promise that we'll be in a place where it won't shift again after that. But it would be really difficult from the cash reserve levy standpoint. In, you know, it's hard for me to foresee us being, you know, in five years, being in, you know, we might go under fifteen percent, but not being anywhere, you know, i- in a place where we feel like we're in trouble. Um, because it's, it's, it's such a challenge to use that cash reserve. Um, you know, basically you, you are forced to either go to SBR, well, yeah, you are forced to go to SBRC. Um, and there just are, are limited avenues to, you know, to play that card, so.
Well, can I just interject? And isn't one of those avenues that we can use, um, those funds for special education services? And so are we really maximizing all of our special education services? And are we looking at all of our IEPs to assure that all of our kids are getting the supports that are required in the IEP? And that we can actually use, go back to SBRC and ask for the spec ed funds and use the cash reserve levy there?
Yeah, in fact, we've done that the last two or maybe three years. And where before, the district just never did that. We were, we were the only district that didn't run a special ed deficit, and we've really changed our approach on that. So we are trying to bill everything that we can to special ed and to, and to, and to not, um, curb, um, what services we're providing because, because there wasn't specific special ed funding for it, because we can go to the SBRC. I will say though, that, that if, if we took a, an aggressive approach to that, we could easily spend through all of the, all the cash reserve, you know, a couple of years and never be able to keep it replenished if that's the, you know, depending on how, you know, how specific you want to get about, about, um, providing.
Well, I mean, I just want to make sure our kids have the basics of what are required in IEP. And when I'm talking to folks in the district and they're transferring a kid to another district, and the other district is talking about, gosh, we can get these resources and these resources. And it's like, why can't we, in a way, that, you know, I don't, I mean, obviously that's a very broad case example. I couldn't, you know, that's just, I guess, that I sit and wonder.
More about that one, because the, the prob, the, the bigger problem that we've had is people wanting to, you know, we've had special education, numerous cases where special education students have OE'd out, and then, and then they want to come back the same year because they realize they, they're not getting what, what it is that they claimed that they were gonna be promised. And, and we have to say no to a, a lot of OE in from special ed because the state won't let us take the special ed OE in because of our percentages. So I don't think there, I don't think we're missing the boat on that one materially. But your point's taken, and, and that is something that we, we do have to continually coach Shalain and her team on because they, they, they tried so hard to stay within that budget. It's like, look, that's a, that's an artificial barrier, you know? So we have been going to the SBRC and, and, and I think our board has understood that running a special ed deficit doesn't mean you're doing something wrong. Um, you know, special ed has, is historically underfunded to the tune of about sixty percent. Um, you know, since the inception of IDEA. So, you know, that's always a, an ongoing battle. But, um, yeah, so, you know, that's a point, point, point well, well taken, and I think we're on top of that.
So like for FY twenty, Kelly, we had gone and asked SBRC for close to ten million dollars for, for sped, basically special education. And I'm speaking from memory, I may be off a little bit, but it was close, close enough to that number. Ten billion, I think it was nine point something. Yeah, almost ten million dollars. Yeah, you're welcome.
I had a quick question because I know that, um, I think in the timeline you identify, yeah, publishing, uh, the tax rate on the twenty-second. So if I recall correctly, once we publish, we can go down, but we can't go up, correct? The tax rate?
Sorry, can you repeat that question again?
Yeah, so, um, we publish in the register on the twenty-second, and that's publishing the tax rate.
Correct.
And once we publish, we can adjust the levy down, but we can't adjust up. And the rate that you're proposing is?
Sixteen.
Sixteen point oh eight per thousand.
That is correct.
Okay. So I do have just another quick question. So, um, and I wa, I think I heard you say this, but I want to make sure that I'm clear. So in each of the tax components that we've identified, uh, in the slide, slide fourteen, we have, um, sort of leveraged all of the levies that we have available to our benefit. And there's no other, um, rabbits we need to pull out of our hat to ensure that sixteen oh eight is where we need to be. We feel confident that we've done everything. Okay.
The, the only two levers that we have, cash reserve levy, but there is a, a, a control on that. If your solvency exceeds twenty percent, you can no longer charge, and the other is management.
Okay.
Those are the only two, two levers that we have.
Mr. Baron, did you want to ask your question, or were there any other, did you want to ask your question?
I'm, I'm happy to. Um, I, I just wanted to, so looking ahead and assuming, you know, fourteen, fifteen million dollars in reductions in the next couple of years. It, you know, it wasn't lost, I mean, to get to this, this number. It seemed like the, in, in one of the early slides you, you presented to us, the components to get to fifteen million were fairly small. So, and, and I'm making that point because, you know, it's, every year you guys tell us, well, listen, we, we cleared all the low hanging fruit off. And, you know, next year it's gonna be worse. And so I guess what I just wanna, um, where I'm going with this is just talk to us about what next year can look like in terms of, okay, listen, you know you're gonna come back and say we gotta cut more. What, what, start to bring the board around to what they gotta be prepared for a year from now?
And that's a good question, Rob, and if you remember in the last.
Without, without keeping anybody up at night or giving anybody nightmares, please.
Now you've made it extremely difficult for me.
That's not fair, Rob.
So if you remember, two weeks back when I presented the deck, the last slide had, what is it that we need to do on a long-term basis to really cut on costs? The only, there, there were three items listed over there. One, one of them was evaluate all the programs in the district and see if they are adding to the student ROI or not. We have looked at IB and turned it on odds this year. They were fairly small, but we have to give it a very aggressive look. The second thing is demographic study. How many buildings do we need? Do we have to redraw boundary lines? And knowing fully well that this is something which will not be able to meet what you just said. It's gonna be a difficult, very difficult challenger, but that is something which we have to look. Uh, th- there are investments which we make in different buildings, whether it is coming from Save or Pipple, or it could be coming from our general fund. So it's a, it'll help in both those different funds over there as we make those decisions. Knowing fully well, it won't be easy decisions. The third item was probably not a reduction, but an increase was based on the recommendations that we get from the athletic committee. What is it that we have to invest? So, so in, in terms of reduction, it's gonna be basically, as I see it, evaluating all the programs and implementing a demographic study, engaging a consultant, hiring consultant, engaging him, and following through the recommendations.
Can I just add one other thought to that, which really, I think, probably is the thing that is keeping me up at night? And that is the notion of any impact that, uh, voluntary diversity plans have on our student count, which historically has been the way that we've been able to sort of eke out a little more each year. And we're seeing that trend going backwards. And I think we have a really conservative estimate on the implications for, um, loss of enrollment on diversity plan. And if it goes south faster than we've planned or anticipated here, then we could find ourselves in a much tighter situation budgetarily than what we're even projecting right now. So that's the thing that keeps me up at night. And the fact that we don't know the impact of that, and we're projecting, I think, in my opinion, a little low, um, I think is something that, uh, future boards are gonna have to deal with.
So this is something which Tom and myself, we did discuss, and, and you bring a valid point. The hundred and fifty is more related to FY twenty-two for the simple reason, by the time the bill was approved and the window which the parents had was fairly short. Having said that, there could be a tsunami starting FY twenty-three, which, which is fairly difficult to really assume or make an assumption on in that. And I'm open to all suggestions from any board member or anyone on that. But you, you're absolutely right, there could be a tsunami in twenty-three, twenty-four onwards.
I think that really points out the importance of our student-focused efforts and increasing the overall performance of our district so that we can indeed compete and people don't want to leave. So I think it just really underscores all of the work that we went through earlier and the fact that this board has got to be laser-focused on student outcomes because that's the only way we're gonna keep kids in this district. We've got to be stellar.
Shashank, I just have a quick question on the calendar key dates. And I referenced that you have a virtual community forum scheduled on March twenty-sixth. That's a Friday. I don't know if you, what your time is during the day, but if it's an evening, at least I swear that's what my calendar said. Maybe I'm wrong.
No, it is on a Friday. It is on Friday, and, and hopefully we should do it pre-knoon now.
Okay, is that like, and I don't know how this is gonna roll out. Is it gonna be audiotaped, or is it gonna be an opportunity for community members to submit questions for answer? Like typically, that's their opportunity is to attend, ask the questions. Um, but if it's at noon on a Friday, if you're working, you're not gonna be able to do that. So that's not necessarily accessible to all families and parents and community members. So how are we going to assure that's gonna happen?
So this will be very similar to what we had done last year. So we had the session, we did the presentation, Tom and myself presented. And we provided a link on the presentation where anyone from the community could send questions to us. And we responded back to them and provided response fairly quickly to, to all the questions that were raised. So even if you, if they're unable to ask questions at the time of presentation, there would be a window available to them to ask any questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions before we end for this evening? Okay, seeing none, thank you all. We are going to close out our work session. Thank you.